On the 12th of January. Let us have the Pledge of Allegiance. Oh, yeah, that would help. David, would you like to lead us in a pledge?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands by my nation under God. Native of this world with liberty and justice for all.
Linda, roll call.
In just a second, I guess. And another screen, sorry about that. Okay, Councilmember Hornick.
President.
Councilmember Lewis.
Yeah.
Councilmember Silva.
Here.
Vice Mayor Sanchez.
Here.
And Mayor King.
Here.
And any reordering of the agenda.
No reordering the agenda this evening.
Now we have public comments. We have two speakers for public comment, and I will call up now John Dorwin.
John Dorwin, 104 Six Flags Circle Buellton. I would like to address the recent flooding that we experienced along this San Ynez River. Between the golf course and industrial way. I think there's adequate documentation that this area was completely underwater, including the area that was going to be or is being proposed for residential development. Some of us remember nineteen sixty-nine. It really wasn't that long ago that we had a so-called five hundred year event which took out half the bridges on the San Ynez River. And it looks like we may have experienced another five hundred year event just last week on San Marcos Pass. The news reports I saw said we got twenty-one inches of rain in seven days. That I believe the definition of a five hundred year event in the flood control world is with saturated soils, you have an inch, an hour rainfall for a sustained period of twelve hours. And that overwhelms any of the design parameters that any civil engineer using a hundred year event programs for. Buellton is not in that good a shape in terms of flood control. We have the river to our south, but then we also have a huge watershed that is north of town that goes all the way up to Zaca Lake. And Zaca Lake is landlocked at that watershed. I don't think there's ever been a watershed study, according to the civil engineers I've spoken with, of what Buellton is looking at and whether or not the culverts for Zaca Creek are adequately sized. I've done some litigation in this area, and it's my experience that government generally builds what they can afford, not what they should be programming for in terms of either the hundred year event or the five hundred year event. And I think Buellton want to take another look at the flood control situation, particularly along Zaca Creek. And you ought to have some civil engineer do a watershed study of the area between here and Zaca Lake. Again, if you take a look at the data, I believe all of this flood control structures along Zaca Creek to include the property at the boundary of the San Ynez River are all undersized. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dorwin. Next, Mr. Dan Heady.
Good evening. There's quite a storm. As Mr. Dorwin said, I heard it just a fifty-year one, but doesn't mean one. I think people can remember back in ninety-five, at least I can. That's when we had two hundred year storms, one in March, one in January, and then the next one in March. So when the bridge was almost overflowing down by Saca on there. So first of all, I'd like to thank the first responders, the fire, sheriff, Caltrans, Public Works, all the people involved with letting me sit in my house and watch this rainfall fall. So thank you. The next day, I went down to the golf course by my house. I will call it Zaca Lake Golf Course now. The water was up to the number eight tee box at seven o'clock that morning. So it was two feet higher than it was when I saw it at noon. I took a look over at the hub project site next to the Rancho de Maria field there. It was, it was covered still. And if you can imagine another two feet of water in there. There was still water running from talking to Rose and looking at appropriate websites. It seems that you can build in flood plains, but as long as you don't disrupt the flow of the river. Well, I'll tell you, that river was flowing, and it was flowing where there would be houses. So we have a problem here. Reading the MND for that project, substantial alter will not substantially alter the existing drainage pattern of the site or area, including the alteration of the course of a stream or river. And it was supposed to be less insignificant impact. I did not see that Tuesday morning. It was significant. So where do we go from here? I'm sure the city is not self-insured. I think you need to get with your consult with your insurance company about liabilities. I think you need to consult with like land use attorney about liabilities and the option to vacate an incorrect MND. I think you need to have a proper MND done that accurately reflects the conditions on the site as we saw them Tuesday, and we might see him again on Saturday. And then I think lastly, consult with the owner, Gavin Moore. He will be the first one sued, then the city. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Heady. Anyone else like to come up to the podium? No? Okay, let's move on to the consent calendar. Minutes of December eighth, twenty twenty-two, special city council meeting. Minutes of December eighth, twenty-two, regular city council meeting, list of claims to be ratified and ratified per payment to date for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty-three. Treasurers report November thirtieth, twenty twenty-two.
I'll move to approve.
One second.
Linda.
Okay, Councilmember Sanchez.
Hi.
I'm sorry, I, I'm Vice Mayor Sanchez, sorry about that.
Hi.
And Councilmember Lewis.
Hi.
Councilmember Hornick.
Hi.
Councilmember Silva.
Hi.
And Mayor King.
Hi. And we do have a presentation tonight, proclamation recognizing human trafficking awareness month. Do you have the actual document?
It's right behind you.
Right, City of Buellton proclamation recognizing human trafficking and awareness month. Whereas human trafficking is a form of modern day slavery that occurs in every state, including California. Wherein victims are forced to work in various forms of labor exploitation, including but not limited to commercial sex acts and other services that are introduced that are induced through force, fraud, or coercion. And whereas due to its isolation and discreet nature, many individuals across the globe are unaware that trafficking exists in their communities. And whereas human trafficking victims face cruelty that has no place in a civilized world. It is a crime that can take many forms and one that tears at our social fabric, debates our community, our common humanity, and violates what we stand for as a country. And whereas increased education about how to identify human trafficking, along with increased knowledge of in-state resources and services for those affected by criminal exploitation can decrease the number of future victims. And whereas the Santa Barbara County Human Trafficking Task Force is committed to using all applicable laws and resources for investigating human trafficking and prosecuting those who engage in it. And whereas Santa Barbara County Human Trafficking Task Force has worked diligently to bring awareness to the fact that human trafficking occurs closer to the home than one might think. That California ranks number one in the country for reported human trafficking cases, and that Santa Barbara County is home to hundreds of survivors of trafficking and exploitation. And whereas Human Trafficking Awareness Month is an opportunity to recognize the critical role of Santa Barbara County residents play a residents play in preventing, reporting, and adjudicating these heinous crimes. Now therefore, I, Mayor Dave King, on behalf of the Buellton City Council, do hereby recognize January twenty-third, January twenty twenty-three, as Human Trafficking Awareness Month in the city of Buellton, and I call this observance to the attention of all our citizens.
Jeff Schaefer is
Jeff Schaefer?
Yeah. Except that.
Hold on just a second here. Yeah, we are. There we go. Apple's not cooperating there. All right, got it.
Thank you very much. Your hard words. If you'd like to say something, go ahead. Sure.
Our task force was started under the DA's office in twenty thirteen under victim, the victim witness program. I joined the task force in twenty fourteen. My current role is to help coordinate our leadership team and our action groups, which are going to create a strategic plan to tackle the issue of labor and sex trafficking countywide. So very thankful for this proclamation. And I left my business card so that if any of you want to talk more about the, the issue, we are looking for city council member champions from each city to be a part of kind of our planning. So if anyone has an interest in this issue, please just contact me. We also do human trafficking one-on-one trainings for businesses or hotels, all kinds of the partners that might be the first responders. So just really appreciate your time. This is a scourge on our society that I feel like we should all kind of combat together. So really appreciate it.
Thank you. Can I ask your question?
Yeah, you have a question. This is, I was gonna ask if there's anything Buellton specifically could focus on to help combat this.
Yeah, I would say we, we want to start a couple of things. We have a, we have an interfaith coalition against human trafficking, and we want to start a business coalition on behalf of survivors. So our task force over five years has served over two hundred and eight survivors. But a lot of what we need to do for them is moving them from the place where they were discovered into permanent housing and then work and empowerment. So there's also kind of opportunities for people, for average citizens or business owners should dive in to be a part of our supportive plan. So I, I think there are ways to work residents and businesses and faith communities into our plans.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to talk to you about that.
Yeah, just reach out to me anytime. Thank you very much.
Really appreciate it.
Thank you for coming.
Okay, moving on to public hearings. Scott?
We have no public hearings this evening.
And then we will go on to council member comments or items.
I have some, if nobody else does.
You can go first.
Okay, well, my comment is really on the back of the public comments from my neighbors in Rancho de Maria. The the flooding that we all saw in the recent rainstorms, I would just ask the staff to, to take a look at the conditions of approval related to the hub and BUE seventeen. I would also ask staff to heed public comment and see if there's anything we need to do about bumping up our, our, our city culverts related to flooding. And I would also like to find out if there was something that we should do in terms of protecting ourselves from liability if, if that hub project or BUE seventeen is developed and does flood. I would also note that the, I personally saw the city Zaca Creek flow quite high. And that is right adjacent to Rancho de Maria, another three feet of flooding, which sounds like a lot, but really that creek probably went from not running at all to five, six feet of depth overnight. And so another three feet, if we had continued to get rain, Rancho de Maria would have flooded. Alternatively, if some housing was built there and impeded the flow of that water, I'd be very concerned about Rancho de Maria flooding. So if staff could take a look at that and let us, the public know, that'd be great. I also have another comment.
You're on a roll.
I'm on a roll. So if I also was talking to a couple of people, and these concerns are related to planning commission. And I was wondering if there was, I know that other cities have ordinances on the books that allow city councils to review planning commission decisions if they affect a larger, the city at a large. And so I was wondering if, if City of Buellton had those, and if they didn't, if staff could take a look into whether or not that would be something of interest for us.
Sure, I, I can actually answer that briefly. Buellton's code is antiquated in that regard, and it still provides for council member appeals of an item. But there was a, there have been a couple of cases over the past five or six years that have basically said if a council member appeals, then the council member can't be part of the hearing because you've already said that you're opposed to whatever decision was made. So you're right, sir. Many cities, including a few that I represent, have gone with what we call a, a call for review or a referral to council. And it's based not on disagreement with the planning commission's decision, but as you said, sir, on the idea that the item is of such importance to the city overall that the council should be making that decision. What I can do is either simply prepare a change to the ordinance and bring it to the council, or if the council wants to hear about options, we could bring it forward in, in sort of in a, a study session or an informational report to then get direction on what kind of, of ordinance you'd like. I'm happy to do either. Obviously, you know, we, we can't vote on it, but if the mayor wants to direct me to bring forward one or the other, I'm happy to take that direction from the mayor.
I will be in contact with you, Bob.
Thank you. And then we'll, and then we'll get something to you very quickly so that at the minimum the group can then give me direction on which way to go if we don't simply go with the call for review immediately.
Okay, so just to be clear, a city council member on the books right now could appeal a planning commission decision, but would have to recuse themselves.
Exactly right.
Got it. Okay. Yeah, I would love to hear options, but.
If you, if you'd love to hear options, then we can go that way. That's the easy one. I can't get direction from you all tonight to simply prepare an ordinance because that's not on our agenda, of course. But if, if y'all want options, I can be back in probably two meetings with a list of three or four different ways that this could go.
And like I said, I'll be in contact.
Thank you, sir.
Now currently, refresh my memory, isn't an appeal from a council member after a planning commission meeting, isn't there a timeframe on that?
There is a timeframe, yes. And it's after the commission's final action is taken, which in the case of the item currently pending before the commission, it's controversial, no final action has been taken, so the clock wouldn't have started to run yet.
But there's, but you have to appeal that. Isn't there, isn't it a two day or?
Ten days.
Ten days. Okay, ten days.
And and the shortcut, well, to just briefly touch on what the call for review normally does, it's a no fee because obviously one of you is calling it up for all of you to, to look at. So unlike an appeal, there's no fee. And usually the time limit runs one or two days before the time for an appeal runs, so that potential appellants can look and wait to see if a council member takes the action on their own. And then if no council member takes the action, they file the appeal and pay the fee. So it's, it, we, we try and set it up to make it as fair as possible to the public.
So, so sorry, since a council member could appeal or review
Right.
within one or two days of final determinance.
Right, right. So, so what we would do is, you know, our, our appeal period is ten days. So our call for review period, I would suggest setting it up at like eight days. And that way, appellants on day nine, or potential appellants on day nine could go in and say, hey, has any council member called this for review? If the city clerk said, no, no council member filed, then they can get together and appeal. That would be the way I would suggest setting it up ultimately.
Sir, clarification.
Yeah.
Are you talking about appealing a planning commission's decision?
Reviewing.
Reviewing, yes.
Or does that what we do when we come back into?
Some planning, some planning commission decisions come to you anyway. Some get appealed to you, but under this format, if it's a planning commission decision that is final with them, and you're worried that maybe nobody will appeal, or you as a council want to have the final say, then you're worried that maybe nobody will appeal, or you as a council want to have the final say, then what we would create is a way for you to do that without knocking your own self out of the decision-making process. It's, if it's important enough, then we obviously want every council member possible to weigh in on it. So, uh, but I'll, we'll, we'll go through it and we'll, we'll make it a pretty clear process with some options for you.
Right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other comments or items from the council?
I have a comment, I wanted to thank the public works for jumping on the, the storm watch and, um, I went with, uh, ran around looking at all the things I used to do. Anyway, they, uh, they, the team was out and they blocked the roads. We had a problem on Honda, uh, diverted the flow out of the basin. And, uh, they were running around, uh, taking care of business. I just want to thank them for all their hard work.
Yeah.
Goodness, we've, uh, there's been times it's been a lot worse, but they were on it.
Yes, Scott and I were out as well, looking around at the, uh, the flooding and they were out in force, so yeah.
Alright, thank you, Rose.
Uh, okay, no other, uh, comments or items, written communications?
No written communications this evening.
And committee reports, anyone been to a committee recently they elected? And we will move on to business items. And this is update on broadband strategic and the staff contact on this will be City Manager Wolf.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the city council, um, as the council remember, well, maybe you won't remember, some of you certainly. In November of twenty one, the city council, um, directed staff to join with the broadband, uh, strategic planning effort being conducted by S B CAG. Um, the, the city joined in with that effort, uh, contributed some funding to the countywide. Um, you know, regional effort to plan for broadband, uh, service expansion. Uh, broadband, uh, consortium of the Pacific Coast is here this evening to give the city council an update on, uh, the planning efforts and let you know where we're at and where we go from here. Uh, that's my introduction. I will now turn it over to Mr. Becker.
Thank you, um, Mr. Wolf, uh, Mayor, council members. My name is Mike Becker. I'm the Director of Planning at Santa Barbara County Association of Governments. Here to, uh, introduce the broadband team. Actually, Maria Kelly is going to do the bulk of the presentation, but we also have Shelby Arthur here, broadband consortium Pacific Coast, and Fred Luna, who, um, you may know, but he is getting into the broadband business as well. So typically I have four points I cover in my introductions. I think you had probably three of them. So first off, I, I want to thank you for allowing us to come and present to you. I, I recognize that there's have been some turnover on the council since we've been here last, so, um, I apologize if this is all new to you and feel free to ask as many questions as, as you please. But essentially, as, um, Scott mentioned, the city joined with the other eight cities and incorporated county to develop a broadband strategic plan for the region. And really what the purpose of this was, was to align with state and federal goals related to broadband, but also because there's a ton of broadband money coming available. So we want to prepare the region to be able to capitalize on that funding and to make real world improvements. To the broadband infrastructure in the region. Throughout this, uh, we did a variety of community forums, including one in Buellton at the junior high. Uh, we, um, did a lot of looking at what exists currently in the county, what doesn't exist, where are the gaps, uh, what are potential funding sources to help to find next steps. Um, so all that is summarized in the plan. I just gave enough copies to the city manager for each of you, as well as a couple others. But as we got into this project, there was always the concern that S B CAG is not a broadband agency. We're primarily transportation, a little bit in the housing space, but primarily transportation. And what happens when this is done? Uh, we can deliver a plan, but who picks it up and runs with it? And that was really part of the question of, of what happened, of it, it concerned me and, but it seems that we figured it out, which is a good thing, because now we can capitalize on these funds. Um, but, um, S B CAG in partnership with the county applied to the California Public Utilities Commission for local agency technical assistance funding, which essentially will enable us to stand up, um, an aspect within S B CAG, which Fred will run. Fred is the man or the director of project delivery to S B CAG, and the next project on his list is going to be broadband. And so over the next couple of years, uh, we'll be, uh, completing a region-wide programmatic environmental impact report for broadband, infrastructure, construction and deployment. Uh, we will be seeking to negotiate a joint powers authority that would live within S B CAG to um, be the governing body for building out broadband. And we're also going to undertake some high-level last mile network design. I mean, the purpose of that is so we can cost estimate, um, projects in individual areas. Uh, to seek additional funds, which then Fred will manage the construction or coordinate the construction of those. Um, so that, um, the, the plans are there. Maria Kelly is going to do most of the discussion, and actually, since, um, Mr. Wolf said most of my points have got me a little, threw me a little off script. Uh, so I'll turn it over to Maria, and we're both available for questions.
And I believe you have my PowerPoint.
I do. Right here, oops. If I can get that.
I could try to rattle it off the top of my head.
No, not, not necessary, honestly.
Context is good.
Okay, let's see, we share this, and let me get, uh, right.
So there will be a little bit of background, because we recognize and part of the point of, of waiting and recognize some of your faces, that we knew that there was a lot of new city council members. So it really did make sense to come back in January, um, to do this while the project did wrap up in December. Um, we feel it's important, and then our final presentation will be to the Board of Supervisors in a couple of weeks. So it dragged out a little bit longer, but all good, because we wanted to get the information to the right people. So next slide, please. For some of you that are familiar, we'll, I'll cover a little bit about the, um, the project timeline, this strategy status, it's complete. Um, some highlights, highlights, some speed test summary, because, and that's going to be important, because we're still looking for more data. More data is still needed from Buellton specifically around the speed test. We didn't have significant participation, so the data is inconclusive, helpful as baseline, but we need a little more data from you all. Um, some recommended local actions and then regional next steps. And the regional next steps I'll go over have been presented to every city council so far. You are our final city council, the S B CAG Board of Directors, and as well as the Board of Supervisors. So there really is a regional, there is a regional snapshot that is being shared with everyone. Next slide, please. So the project really did kick off last January while funding was secured in late twenty twenty one. The actual work effort really didn't start until the, in January twenty twenty two. Outreach started in March. We were in your community in May. May, end of May, we did a panel discussion, um, and a forum, which was great, and a lot of that data has been outlined. You have a Buellton section in there, so if you don't want to read the whole document, you can just look up Buellton. Um, and then we went through this whole project. You'll see the November presentations and project wrap-up that really did go into December. Um, we had a lot to put together and it took some extra time. Next slide, please. So, obviously really pared down highlights, but what we basically did is we took the data, um, the stakeholder engagement, and there was an open access G I S mapping done throughout this process. S B CAG got the files today. Um, that can be shared with any of the planning communities within the cities. And we stacked that all together to make sure priorities are identified. And there are some unique priorities for each community, and those are also captured in Buellton, and I'll, I'll cover some of them in a couple of slides. We wanted to make sure that this project aligns, we touched, we touched points, uh, um, that aligned with federal and state funding. There is significant funding, and with that funding, there's a lot of policy and legislation that was passed in twenty twenty one. There are more policy coming in twenty twenty two. There is a massive commitment to infrastructure, um, to ensure connectivity. Fallout from COVID, but it's been a long time coming. Um, it, so the open access G I S tool, we captured each community status, so you'll be able to go through and look at what we recommended for each community. Some of those recommendations are different. Um, different priorities potentially, and then different approaches, but there's at least a baseline so that regionally everyone's looking, everyone has the same information, which is really important. And at the end of the day, everybody wants reliable internet. So, um, a lot of Santa Barbara County is connected, more or less. But we found, we do find areas that are not connected, who don't access service, or service is far too costly. Um, and people are having to make choices between internet service and or some other something else, but we're recognizing more and more to achieve digital equity, access to internet service is inherent to important to equality of life. Um, it's becoming more and more, um, the state and the federal have passed digital equity sort of statements. It's really important. Um, and Buellton is totally ready to plan for broadband. I know you've done some work this year, and I haven't touched back with, um, Scott about what your status on general plan status and those kinds of things, but you're getting there. Next slide, please. So these, this is what the speed test summary looks like in this. There's a lot of nuance here, and I won't spend a lot of time on it. I did, I did share that, um, you're free to contact any of us for additional information. When we're talking about speed test data and why that's important. We did an overlay over the C P U C map and compared to, to route to speed. So the average speed or the previously desired speed is twenty-five download, three upload. Post-COVID and under the state and the federals, that minimum speed has moved to a hundred download and twenty upload. Ideally, they want a hundred symmetrical, meaning hundred download, hundred upload, minimum speeds. You don't see that happening for a lot of people unless they're paying quite a bit of money for it, but they, that's what the state and the feds would like to see as baseline um, for connectivity, which means fiber. So a little bit of data here, we got about fourteen data sets out of the whole set city of Buellton. That's not enough. We'd love to have a hundred, two hundred. Um, we're continuing to connect this. Um, we still have the speed test site connected through the Pacific Broadband Consortium website. I'll make sure that, um, you have that information. Next slide, please. So what are the recommended local actions? After review, consider adopting the strategy as an opportunity, not necessarily committing funds at this time, but at least make it a planning priority and part of your ongoing discussion, so that as policy decisions need to get made around infrastructure planning, you're prepared to do that. Um, support the open access mapping tool, whether, how, that's going to be working with, um, with the team, Fred. Team, um, may, if, if, as, uh, data can be uploaded, once you have asset managed, assets identified, getting that into the mapping system. The biggest barrier to deployment for telecom is that sort of that interface between, um, the public sector and the private sector, and really having that consistency and the opportunity to deploy. There's a lot of costs there. So there are some barriers, and you'll find that in the document. There's really specific policies that will help reduce that barrier for, um, infrastructure deployment. And then participate with S B CAG, really consider joining a broader J P A, so that the burden and the capacity doesn't just fall on you solo that you are approaching this regional. Broadband planning is best done regionally. Um, not in a silo or it's best done regionally. So that's our recommendation. I won't go over each of these, but again, around broadband for all, California broadband for all, which this plan was done with that lens, looking at access affordability, adoption, and then ultimately looking at redundancy and resiliency. We, we can see baseline from an infrastructure standpoint. There's not a lot of resiliency within Buellton, meaning there's not necessarily a fiber loop. Um, there's an issue with connectivity. Heard a lot at the public outreach forum that during COVID, you had a, you had several, many students in your parking lot here doing school, um, at all hours of the day, during the day and into the evening, because this is where, and I was actually working in my truck. This is the only place where there really is public access to Wi-Fi. Um, that's an affordability issue. So for people that can't afford access, they're coming to your parking lot. There may be ways to expand that, um, which is important for consideration. Partner with the Digital Equity Coalition. There is a Digital Equity Coalition looking at, so that's talking about accessibility and adoption, equipment, training. Um, Shelby Arthur is working with the Digital Equity Coalition. It's already been stood up. It's being led by S, um, the Santa Barbara Foundation is with support from, um, the consortium and S B CAG. It's really a critical piece for all our communities, but it really did come up for Buellton specifically because of some other gaps that you have. Um, develop an inventory of assets. Again, that goes back to policy, understanding what your assets are that might be able to be used for deployment or block deployment. And really be clear on what's happening within your community, fiber in the ground, aerial fiber, um, just different planning. An understanding of how it's, how, what the planning approach might be. And, um, this isn't something that's going to happen a month from now, or necessarily even six months from now. Broadband deployment is going to take us years and years. So we're just, we're just priming the pump with this process and this conversation. Um, ultimately, where does this go? It becomes smart city planning. Fiber infrastructure is really important for smart city planning, and that is the future for all of our cities, is really that smart city infrastructure. Um, elected officials lead with policymaking, and then staff and other, um, entities and agencies help with deployment. And your key, other key partner is the telecoms. So there is an opportunity there to engage with them. Next slide, please. Recommended regional actions. Again, this is what we're recommending across all the region is we're looking at the local agency technical assistance funding, supporting the, you know, supporting S B CAG with the hiring, looking at last mile engagement. So anything in green is what we, is already underway or being accomplished. We just met today with, um, the, um, Schu- Schumashon Econ Alliance. They're looking at a north county fiber loop, fiber ring for redundancy. It's a really cool project. I'm sure you'll hear more about it. Um, and then anyway, so just again, you'll, you can take a look at this. You have the PowerPoint and, um, happy to answer any questions. I believe that's my last slide. Should be Q and A. Oh, sorry, your steps. I totally forgot. I apologize. So what you're considering for Q one of this year, again, c- consider adopting the strategy, Q two, develop priorities and approach. Take what you want from this. You can take a little of it, none of it, all of it. Uh, whatever you decide to do, you have it there to work with whenever you want to. Um, determine your policy and priorities. Think about smart city planning towards the end of this year. And then look backwards to look forwards. And that's really where Buellton is. There's not a lot of heavy lift here right now. It's a lot of consideration, really. Um, so it's, it's, yeah, we kept it pretty, pretty light um, for you all to, so you can have a, kind of get all caught up to speed, but partnering with your local communities and solving and everyone else, it's going to be really important to stay engaged in that conversation. And that should be my last slide. Okay. Seven minutes? I said seven minutes, right? Happy to answer any questions. I know that's a lot of information. Always happy to follow up by email, um. You just had to get ahold of us, so. But if you have any.
I had a quick question.
Yeah.
So, uh, excuse my ignorance here, but so, so when, uh, strategic plan for broadband and, and digital equity is getting rolled out, is this something where, um, you're looking into securing easements for fiber optic lines? Is that, I, I mean, I feel like I just don't ignore it again.
That's a great, actually, that's a really great question. So yes, part of the process is identifying easements within communities, and who has permitting pro- who has permitting authority within, do you have, we asked, you know, do you have poll permitting authority? Do you have easement authority? And if you do have easement authority, do you know where they are and are they mapped out? Most of the communities do not say, well, yeah, we have some easement authority. We do not have it mapped out. Well, that's very difficult then for anybody to come in and deploy any fiber. Buried fiber, buried cable. Do you have any conduit? No, okay, well, we've got to figure out how to install. What are your easements? We don't know. Okay, maybe we're not going to put it in now. So.
Okay.
It's important.
And so then, then you asked, we were assessing gaps in digital equity and that sort of thing. And, and fiber is, is that the gold standard?
Fiber is the gold standard. That is a lot of the, um, legislation, again, from the state and the feds is really focused on fiber. Recognizing that sometimes last mile, there may be a point-to-point wireless that may be required, but for the most part, priority in rural areas, which is where the initial deployment is going. They, fiber is the first choice.
Okay, and then, um, and then is it just going to be leased to a telecom?
So it's not, it does, we're not saying in this strategy that, that the community needs to build the fiber. Of course, that's an option. It's just being aware that either that, that you have a role in the policy, so that if there's a private sector partner, a telecom comes in, that, that you're basically ready to deploy broadband. Um, that they don't have to wait, take time, or there's not that additional cost, like when Mike, Mike was talking about doing a programmatic E I R. The advantages of that are that then some of that, um, the environmental impacts have been assessed and that there's no delay. So it's reducing that delay. We're looking at everything we can do to lower the barrier to deployment by community and by region.
Thank you.
Um, I was curious about, I know you mentioned we only have like fourteen data points for the town. And do you mean that's like fourteen users submitted?
Fourteen households submitted, uh, speed test.
And you needed that up?
Would love a couple hundred.
And are, it's on, so I mean, it's also one of the thing that kind of begets it, where it's like, you would likely be digitally affluent to be able to know to then find that.
It's, that's a great point. Yes, no. I mean, yes, you need to be digitally affluent. On one hand, on the other hand, there's enough people that probably own computers either at their place of business or at their home, that could provide us some scenario. Either at their place of business or at their home that could provide us some scenario or some insight into what those speeds are or no service. There is an actually option. To say I have no service or no access to service. It, that always comes up like, well, I would need to know how to access a computer. Yes, most people in Buell, they're predominantly. Literacy gaps were from the community said, it's mostly our students and our seniors. So.
Oh, and I guess it's more of just, it's the thing of, I would imagine that if you aren't comfortable with necessarily using a computer and that's like, and now we're going to speed test. I feel like that's already going to be like, I don't even want to deal with it.
So those are the people, we're not necessarily speaking to that. We are speaking to those that do are comfortable using computers, have used computers. And are aware sort of of internet savvy to help us provide that data to know what else we need to do.
Great. So definitely want to help with that then. So that's the question. The other question I had is that, is this looking forward? I know you just said the hundred down, hundred up. Assuming how things move and what we're talking about, is that assumed to be acceptable by the time we're rolling this out? Or is it like, we're kind of always going to be chasing this situation?
That's such a great question and it comes up a lot in conversations. So, you know, historically it's been twenty five, three, it's been twenty five, three for years prior to that. It was ten, one. A hundred and hundred. There's a lot of nuances to why they chose that. In all reality, when you talk to cities who are true, really engaged in planning. Like across in California and across the country, they're gigabit cities. When you start deploying fiber, you're not really talking about a hundred symmetrical. So you're really talking, the infrastructure being deployed in a lot of areas, they're really targeting the future. This is future forward. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Anyone else? The Joint Powers Authority, what is that?
Yeah, Councilmember Sanchez, I think a lot of it's still to be determined. We understand that we need some type of organization. To house the broadband function and, and SB CAG being a transportation agency, it doesn't, and you know, we have. There's laws and regulations that kind of govern what we do. So the Joint Powers Authority or JPA would. Enable, you know, it would have a board of directors, which probably would be the SB CAG board of directors. But it would have, you know, a legal governing body assigned specifically for broadband. And this is, a lot of it's still to be determined. And we'll find out a lot more over the next year or so. And my guess is there would be, it would be self-funded or exist as long as it can remain financially able to remain. But it's really just to coordinate efforts and to have a legal governing body for it.
And then the, would each person who gets broadband be paying into it? And would everybody, or is it something everybody would get like a city? Free wifi?
Another excellent question, Councilmember Sanchez. So. What we've done so far is identify some base level needs and we're gonna, over the next year or so. Fred will help refine that to individual projects. What can be done? And ultimately, I believe the digital equity stuff will be countywide. That's what I consider the soft aspects of this. The hard aspects being the infrastructure. I see it moving forward as following the money. So if there are projects that are eligible for grant funding and we can receive grant funding for it. Those will be the ones that move forward first. It's. Not going to be SB CAG or this new JPA coming through and just building fiber throughout the entire San Barbara County. It'll be individual projects to connect communities or portions of communities that are currently underserved or unserved. And also, and I think this goes back to Councilmember Hornix's question earlier. There is going to be a million different ways it doesn't satisfy. It could be SB CAG working with a provider to help find some funding to subsidize something. That's not financially feasible for the provider to do on their own. It could be something that we build. And we own and lease to a provider. It could be a variety of many different things. And I think only the future will tell what, what it ends up becoming.
So would it, would it be like the water department, which you have a enterprise zone, you sell it, you, we, if we owned it, we would get paid for it by the customer or?
Right. If we ended up building fiber and it's owned by a government agency, that fiber would be leased to a private. Or Comcast or Cox or Frontier, one of the providers, and they would pay a fee to lease that infrastructure. And you'd hope, the fee would at least be enough to maintain it into the future. I don't foresee it as a money making. Thing, but something at least can stand on, so.
If it didn't stand on its own, we would have to cover it. Or, or is that?
I think these type of questions we answered through the, when the JPA is negotiated. But also I think. There would be a lot of concern for limiting future liability as that goes forward. And I think. You know, perhaps the, the best case is, is if there's somewhere that is unserved and we can receive grant funding to serve it. Then it, we would sell it or give it to Community Service District or to state agency. That would be ultimately responsible over the long term. But there's a lot of questions you have to answer. And I think. As we go throughout the region, it's going to be different answers in different places.
Thank you. I did, you say you got on the internet out here. We have, we have, we have public internet out here.
Really great public wifi in your parking lot. To the library, yes. Yeah, if you ever need public wifi, it's also, I believe you keep it on twenty four seven, which is to be highly commended. Well done. Any other questions?
So while you're up there, Maria, so in a nutshell, this is going to be government funding, building an infrastructure and then partnering with. Providers such as Comcast, Xfinity.
Potential, potentially, there's a lot of different public, private partnership models. The other thing that we see happening in the state and the nation is providers getting very nervous about funding going to the public sector. This is the first time historically that public sector, that, that funding is going to the public sector for telecommunications infrastructure. And it's for open access infrastructure. Telecoms don't like that per se. Telecommunications are starting to change their business model because they don't want to totally get forced out. So we are seeing telecommunications companies stepping up and going, okay, we'll do it. We may need you to help us get a little money, but we're going to go ahead and build it. We're just going to continue. They're going to revise their business model. Does that make sense? So there's no guarantee that it needs to be publicly built. But there may be a public partner to helping fund it.
So they're, they're concerned that, that. The pub, the private, the public sector will take over the internet.
Yeah, they don't want that.
Concern with, with their, say their own servers.
Right. So there are a few cities and there's a few models where that has happened, where a co-op or someone else has come in and built. There's some great examples throughout the country where that has happened. California itself is planning on building or leasing. Building and leasing ten thousand miles of open access fiber network. That is unprecedented. And then they would lease it to providers where there is no fiber. We know that not all of our providers currently have fiber. Installed, which is some of that delay in the speeds. And so you're good, we're going to see a lot of activity. For example, over to the west of you, Frontier is rapidly deploying fiber as quickly as possible. Also down in Santa Barbara area, they see these, they see this coming up and they're like, we got to hurry up and get our customers.
They were in my neighborhood last week. I asked the guy, what do you? Wandering around and just wonder.
Yeah. So you're going to, telecoms are actively responding to this. Yeah.
So this had basically become like a, a public service such as water sewer. And then, and, and, and if those cities took over in order for them to recoup that expense. This would be like a water service or trash or anything else. There'd bring conversations about that.
If the city, if the public sec, and not all public sector wants to be an owner operator of another infrastructure, right? It's, it's a lot of commitment. There are some cities that do it. San Luis Obispo does have some own, the city does own. They also have a huge IT department to manage it. So it, it really is going to depend by location. The conversation, the end conversation is the internet is going to become the fourth utility. At some point in time, just like water. So great. Thank you for bringing that up. Just like water, sewer and garbage. And all these other, it's going to be a utility, like electricity or gas. And what we're seeing right now is that disruption. And that is ultimately how it's a fourth utility, whether it's a PG&E type utility or a local public utility, we don't know. It's going to depend on, on look cities and regions.
Got you. Thank you.
May I ask one more quick? Just, we, you know, it's, we saw the inequity and it's not like that's gone now. It's just not as visible at this point. Because the internet isn't as critical to that. What can we be doing? Or what, I guess, is there the thing of, what is it that we could be expediting? Because every day we're not moving forward with this, those households are still struggling with access. And so is it that, it's, do we focus on the data points? Do we need to be like, what's the conversation? So it's not just, great, let us know in twenty twenty five when we want to talk about it again.
The data points are really important, really supporting and connecting with the Digital Equity Coalition and understanding what that work effort is, is really important. You've got the people piece of it. You've got the infrastructure piece. There's really not a lot you can do at this point, other than through policy. The infrastructure piece, but really through that connection and that affordability and adoption, there is, because some of your connectivity. Some of that disconnect was affordability and cost. The Digital Equity Coalition will be looking at the Affordable Connectivity Program. And making sure that the community is aware of what is accessible for them. Over fifty five percent, I believe of your students are on reduced and free school lunches. Every single one in the National School Lunch Program can have thirty dollars towards their internet connectivity, which it should then basically be free. So making sure that that outreach is done and supporting that connectivity is a huge thing that you can do.
I'd love more information on that. Yeah. So.
So I'll leave my business card.
Thank you.
Talk to Shelby.
Okay.
But yes, that's, it is a really cool deal. And yes, it would have significance to your community.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, you say fifty five percent of our children are reduced or free lunch?
That's the data that the school district provided to us in May. I don't, I don't know if it's changed. That's the data that, I believe that's what I just read in Buellton. I'm trying to remember. It should be on that next page. Or the next page, actually. Right in there, somewhere.
I will know that our school district boundaries are not the same as the city boundaries. And so that, that, that may not equate directly to our own residents. But it's fairly close.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Shelby, you have anything?
No.
And thank you for your time.
All righty. And we will move on to agenda item number seven. This will be a review of design and budget. For two oh two Dairyland Road. And the lead on this will be Director Rose Hess.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Member City Council. So provided for you tonight is the latest set of progress plans for the library and meeting room improvements. At two oh two Dairyland Drive. Plans are almost complete. The main architectural, mechanical, electrical plans are ninety percent and the structural plans are seventy five percent. Included with the plan sheet is a general cost estimate for the work that's provided in the proven plans. And that estimate is approximately one point four million dollars. And just so you know, while electrical is included in here. Various items such as general furnishings, tables, chairs, sofas, et cetera, are not included within this estimate. But other fixtures such as shelving units, workstations, things that we are going to be built into the facility. That we're going to have, you know, structural seismic tie-ins and things like that. Just, we'd rather have the general contractor put it in. It's part of the project. So that is all included in the estimate. One of the other costs I did itemize on there, that's in addition to this, we do have the construction management portion of it when it's being constructed. We do have our inspectors on there and that's estimated at about seventy five thousand dollars. So at this point, the general project cost estimate for construction is approximately one point five to five million dollars. And this does include all the different. Arrangements, it includes the extended patio, things like that, that council has discussed in previous meetings and provided direction to staff. So with that, if council still chooses, we can go forward with discussion. A budget amendment would be needed to appropriate, the appropriate number of funds for a capital improvement project. We would also like direction as far as putting a cap, for example, on the actual furnishings. The ballpark price for that right now is the estimate that we've worked with, with our architect is roughly fifteen to twenty thousand. And that's just off the top of our head of general furnishings for the main library part. We haven't really even gone into much detail in review. For the meeting rooms, for example, or any other ancillary activities you would like to have there. But that amount is, is much more minor than the actual major construction part. And I anticipate even after a budget has been set for this, once we go out to bid and we get actual construction. Estimates from the bidding will have the concrete numbers and hopefully everything falls. Within or under, hopefully, the estimate that we've provided tonight. But we'll have to see how that. Climate is once we get to that point of actual bidding. So with that, our architect is here tonight as well. And we are available to answer any questions she may have.
Question regarding the contingency. What is the contingency included in the one point five? Is it a dollar amount or a percentage?
It's a percentage. Usually it's about twenty percent.
Okay.
I think it might be less for this amount because it's usually our contingencies are smaller. Once the dollar amounts go higher. I have to take a look at the.
File sixty two is what's in there. Oh, that's what the estimator put in.
Sixty two thousand?
I think that's what.
Yeah.
Yeah, sixty two, four eighty two.
So it's likely that this amount would include furnishings, you know, with the contingency if we were, you know. You know what I mean? Like it could potentially include the cost of any furnishings in there.
Right.
It's usually for things unforeseen and it also opened up.
Right, like asbestos or something you didn't think about. Yeah.
Good evening. I'm Brett Marci for the, some of you I know are new and I've been here a few times talking about this. So anyway, I'm happy to answer any questions. Is there anything that you're trying to cut out of this or shave or?
Oh.
A lot of money.
I'd like to clarify before we get to the cutting part. I know we've presented the council with a concept plan. And there is beautiful furniture and light fixtures. That kind of state of the art things are not included in this design. And the, the cost, I mean, the fancy statement is lighting, that's not included. It's just, it's standard type lighting fixtures that's included with this. So.
Well, the, the fixtures in the main library hall are the fancy pictures and those are the counter.
Oh, that isn't there. Okay.
See that in your, in your drawing.
But that's.
You're going to do it, right?
In bed for a dollar.
Right, seriously.
I don't have the details for the electrical and it just, there was a lump so.
One of the main things that isn't in there, at the last minute. We opened up the meeting room on the south, what is that, southwest? Southwest. And we opened that wall with a big moment train and put a big door system in there. So that doesn't have a patio in front of it. Right now ramp is cutting through. It was a last minute thing and we didn't get to redesigning that area. So there will be additional concrete patio costs involved and I'm hoping to just take it out. The same distance as the main library patio.
Which corner of the, the south west?
The southwest corner.
Can I get just a sort of a point of reference for me? So the estimating cost that I'm seeing broken down on page ninety nine of one oh eight. That's from an independent firm estimating cost or is that your estimated?
It's an independent estimator.
Okay. And I'm seeing forty percent. Is that subcontractor markup? Is that standard?
Thank you. It it's high.
Ninety eight, ninety nine.
That's what we're seeing at the school district. I mean, sometimes they'll come in underbid, but to have a bid higher is is better, but that's we're seeing like thirty, thirty five.
There's not a lot. I don't know what you can do about that.
There's a lot of numbers. That are sort of hidden and moved around in different categories and that's where this forty comes from. It's like this is the real world and this is what contractors do.
Right.
And so uh. You know, some of that's going to the contractor's bottom line and some of it's subcontractor.
Okay. Yeah. And so, I mean, that's really where my focus was. A lot of this I obviously wasn't a part of the concept review stuff, but. Uh, some some seemed high to me, something like I'm on page nineteen hundred, one hundred of one oh eight. Um, demo interior wall, four inches estimated a lot, almost eleven thousand dollars that. For a wall demo that seemed high.
Why?
I mean.
You know, I mean, it's hard to nail all the aspects of it down in detail, but the bottom line is you've got dump fees. You've got all these things incorporated into it that drive the cost up. And um. All I can say right now is costs are so out of line. They're getting better, but it's so out of line that it everything seems crazy.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I've heard that. I've heard that separately as well. Um, okay, thank you.
Yeah, like plywood twenty one a square feet.
Fifty plus. Five hundred building.
There was. Anyone else?
Um, just because we just had this conversation that we had right before this, we just were informed that a lot of the. Community depends on the library wifi access. Is that something that's in the conversation of ensuring wifi access or the fiber cables? Like, is that something that should be discussed at this time, seeing how it's a?
Wifi from the library is provided by the library. Uh, uh, under contract from the city of Galena. That's something that they will install now. They have given us the requirements that they need for. Uh, connectivity, and I believe that's been built into the.
We didn't get any information from them. We tried, Rose tried and we got nowhere.
Not as far as as what they need in terms of.
I try. We've got a server room and. I really don't know the details of what they need.
All right. We'll have to look into that further, but yes, that's something the library will provide. We anticipate that it will have a similar type of of service or just something that they provide at their libraries wherever they operate. So.
Gotcha. Yeah, because I mean, it's also when you think about the project where its location is, it doesn't have the convenient parking lot. You can necessarily sit outside and to utilize.
That's that's correct. Yeah.
That's where I think then when we have, that's that would be the question I have about this is that if when it comes to the design element of it. I guess when I was looking at too, you know, when we talk about like fixtures or things or what's the line item? We say like, let's pay fifty thousand dollars for chairs or things. It's like. I guess it's the accessibility as well as are are we looking at expanding the library service at this time too? Because that changes what we're wanting to to talk about necessarily.
This is not a service or programming change. At this point, this is simply a a a. A capital car, capital improvement. It's it's a building. Uh, you know, if the city is interested in, the city council is interested in looking at programming changes or or um. Uh, it service changes that the library has, we can look at that at a later time. Uh, that that's part of the contract. We'll have to renegotiate with the city of Galena that provides our service to us.
Can I just ask a follow up? Probably dumb question. So uh, does this mean we'll get more books? If this capital improvement goes through.
That is, that is. This doesn't have anything to do with the books.
Yeah, but just separately.
Yeah, we 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 could have some. Slight, I think there's a little bit more room for books in here than there are in the current library, but. Uh, understand that even though we've got a slightly larger facility, given the new ADA standards and such with regard to spacing between stacks and that sort of thing. We're going to lose some of that capacity that that extra um square footage might have afforded us. Um, we will look at uh. In this last year's budget, we uh allocated an additional fund to pre- purchase more books. Uh, we can continue to do that as we move forward if the council so desires. Uh, that's something that, you know, we can discuss with the with uh the city of Galena and their library services department.
Well, that's really the only reason I wanted to bring it up is because we have this space or allocating like. You know, space for server rooms or meeting rooms or what have you, but we have like a book capacity of five hundred odd books, but we're looking with a bigger space, maybe a thousand books. You know, it might be nice to reallocate some of our space uh square footage or whatever, right? And is that what we're talking about today or is that that's really not? That's that's back in concept, right?
Yeah, that's yeah, what we're talking about today. This is, these are the ninety percent plans? Yes. Okay, so the the plans are nearly complete. We're looking for the city council to. Evaluate the plans. Let us know if this if if we're on the right track, if this is where we want to move forward. And if so, authorize um staff. Uh, with some funding to go forward and complete the plans, submit them, uh, you know, have them reviewed for building permits, let out contracts, that sort of thing.
Last question then, what the the one point five with the contingency built in total cost, right? We said we were sure what the city of Galena might need for wifi. Capacity in the server room. Is that is that a factor of cost that's built into our estimate now or?
It.
The server room is there and we've got some power into it. My understanding was that. Galita, the library system that was on them install and.
Yeah.
So we're just giving them the guts and they're gonna.
Right.
But the drugs are there. So the drugs are there so they can access.
The power is there, the room is there to put it in. We just didn't get the specs for what it is they're going to install.
We'll have to go to the street and.
Right, right.
You know, it's a house and yeah, so you know, that will all have to be coordinated. Um, and that's that's really not in. The bit, you know, going from the building out to the street and getting whatever we need. So. I I guess I could run a two inch conduit um from the house to the street and uh, but I don't really know where um.
So they they may have already had cable access to that house.
But it's probably not.
Probably not two inch.
Yeah.
Definitely suggest adding that if we know that they're going to come in and need to do it. So I would definitely add the conduit and I would add the. The concrete patio outside of that reconfigured space. And then I think they're looking also for us to add some sort of budget for furniture, knowing that we'll probably come in under budget with the contingency that we do have, but. We still probably need to give some direction in that regard, right? Like you don't want to just rely on this one point five.
Well, at this point, the 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 amount we're looking at for furniture and correct me if I'm wrong here, either of you is is such a small amount in in relation to the entirety of the project here. If contingency didn't cover it, we can come back and ask for an adjustment as a time as necessary to cover that small amount.
Okay.
I think right now we're looking at at less than thirty thousand dollars, possibly less than twenty thousand.
Okay, okay.
Not at this time.
Okay.
There there's just a, you know, that folding partition that we put in the meeting room. Um. You know, the more. You get into something and you start dissecting the details, that thing just doesn't really, the room that's left when you close that thing off. It's really small and the cost of that unit alone is roughly twenty five thousand bucks.
Let's. So my advice on that is to scrap it.
Yeah.
Make it bigger, right?
It's just, you know, maybe you can put up some freestanding things, you know, it may not be a soundproof thing, but it'll be a visual, but. It it just uh really doesn't make sense. So. And there's a beam that supports that too that we can lose. So that that will be a savings also.
Let's do that. There's there's one question I had on this is uh. There's a double ramp. And I'm I'm not seeing what page is on or whatever, but there was a double ramp for ADA.
Front uh front door?
Yes, is it? Uh, in your estimation, is that absolutely necessary? Because there's going to be an additional cost of putting the other side on. And is it for access to the rest of the sidewalk? Or was that just? Uh, that you could access from either side?
ADA is so hard to uh. I've uh.
When he was putting a pen to the paper, that's.
I've got a unique situation where I've represented these large board banks uh in litigation. On ADA and man, when it goes into litigation. The code book goes out the window and stuff. It's just like we should have known, you know, and there's all these things. And so I've kind of been. Got overkill, but you really have to think outside the box when it comes to access.
Right.
I was trying to give access from from the right side as you walk up, you know, where the garage used to be and. The left side to go down and be a part of the rest of the patio area because otherwise you got to go into the building. Out the door and into the patio. And so it's it it's just.
But you've also designed for the doorways are all.
Accessible.
Accessible ADA to the patio that's going to go all the way around the building.
Right.
So it when you looked at that and designed that, you were just thinking of. Up to the top in the building, if they want to go instead of going through the building, come back down out the ramp on the other side to go to the rest of the patio on the back.
The the rule of thumb is, and it's not written. But you don't want somebody disabled to have to do something different than able bodied people do. And say the library is closed and somebody comes up and goes down. You know, they don't go through the building. They want to go out to the front. You know, there's just all these situations that come up.
Right.
And so honestly, I think it needs to be there.
Yeah, well, I just kind of looked at it. I thought, well, it's kind of peculiar that it went all the way across. But now that you explain it that way, then. Better to do it right than get sued.
Yeah, I I've been really lucky and never been soon. You gotta watch it happen and man, it's just crazy.
Right.
So. The other thing I'm doing uh that I I really didn't get a chance to talk to you guys about was all the windows in this house are residential windows and they're all operable. And we're going to have conditioned spaces. So. It the problem with residential anything is the, for instance, the thresholds on it, you know, you get a nice Anderson system or whatever. They're not accessible. They have these big bump ups on them and they don't make them accessible. And so I'm tearing all the windows out and putting in storefront systems. So the windows won't open. Um, storefront systems are cheaper than residential windows because they're very simple. Uh, but it may seem like kind of a wasted thing to do, but honestly, for a commercial building. They're cleaner, they're easier to maintain, they're just. They they wear better.
Energy efficiency and security and such, they're they're better all the way around.
It's just better all the way around. And so that's an added cost uh that we didn't talk about before. So.
I was gonna ask about that. So uh, did you mention the roll efficiency on the windows as well? Yeah, because that would be a cost savings in the long run, right?
Yeah.
Medical or heat this thing as much, right?
Yeah, we're Cal Green as part of the code and we're governed by all that stuff.
Does it have air conditioning?
Yes.
The um. Are we discussing cut and pull in the partition that that split the window or the uh room, split the room?
I said we take that out.
What I would suggest, rather than trying to do this right here at the meeting, is is maybe the city council gives direction to staff to to take another pass at this, do a little bit of value engineering, see what. You know, work with the architect, see what we can um possibly live without, but wouldn't wouldn't cause them to have to go back to square one on this. Maybe revise um revise the uh um. Estimate a little bit, maybe provide things that are optional in the future that we can add if we decide as we get closer to it that we need it or want it. Uh, and then come back to the city council with um. With a revision to this. Now you can either take action tonight and authorize the 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 budget adjustment so we can get started on this now and we can come back with. With updates as we go, or you can direct us to go back and have us bring this back to you and not allocate the budget until we have those revisions in place.
That is the direction I would like to go. If anyone else.
The direction you'd like to go is which one?
Is is that we have them sharpen their pencils a little bit and then come back before we all allocate the funds for this.
Does that hinder your progress in any way?
Rose, from a time timing standpoint, are we are we um? Are are we critical any place timing wise in terms of moving this forward?
Um, no, the schedule's up to us and how quickly or not we want to move. So.
So get a roll of white out. So and you know, it's 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 regrettable that we have to drag this out, but I think that we'd want to do this correctly in the in the first the first go round before we. You know, start allocating funds for this. So let's let's sharpen the pencil on this and make a couple of changes that you feel are appropriate. And I'm sure you're going to get it with Scott on that.
So in the meantime, if if uh the city council has any individual things that you'd like us to take a look at in particular, obviously, the 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 dividing wall is one of those. Um. Let me know. Shoot myself a rose and email or both of us preferably and let us know and we'll we'll incorporate that into discussion.
Would that be something we we should have a little special meeting at the, you know? Like I I would like the reading area to be by the window rather than all the books, you just little things like that. Didn't make sense to me that. You had bookshelves by the windows and then you got the reading away from the windows.
Let me let me stop you there. Sorry. Getting into the minutia, all this is not for this meeting.
Right.
I think like Scott said. Bring all your concerns to him. And he will go to him and then we will look at that once we have all addressed our concerns rather than trying to hash out in this meeting.
And we can get 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 the concerns to me. I'll I'll compile them all. We'll discuss what we have to. If I have to come back uh with another business item at a future meeting. With some concerns that we need direction from before we bring the final back to you.
Yeah, I think I think you were thinking about maybe doing a subcommittee or something like that to discuss and hash these out because that might be a question, right? There might be a reason to have books there. We already had a whole meeting and all made a big decision and we were going to have two meeting rooms and now we're just deciding to have one. So that's it's that.
Well, we're we're going to have two meeting rooms. One of us is not going to be divisible anymore.
Right, so that's that's fine. Yeah, but. We just. You're talking about little changes inside rearranging. I'm not talking about structural change in the whole thing, but that.
Wouldn't that be more of a design thing towards like?
Yeah, we don't want to, you know, you don't want to divide a room. That's fine too. That was just an idea. And then, but we're changing. We're changing it a little bit. Already sitting here.
Well, uh, but I think, John, that we need to all, like I said, is all bring your concerns. I mean. And and then Scott could go to him and then we can make a decision on it in a future meeting.
The one thing I do want to make sure you get clarification on is if your concern is rearranging the layout of where things are, that will affect.
Right.
The design and layout that we have now. It's different from saying, oh, well. This bench is going to go here instead, but. The rain, the arrangement of the shelving units and where their placements are affects. Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, you're trying to reinvent the wheel. I mean, minor things like that divider because, you know.
Right, because that's.
To little tiny rooms, you know, really isn't beneficial. So I mean, like as Rose is pointing out that. You know, making minor changes that are not structural where he's got to start over again.
Yeah.
It's things like, you know, do we have to put that shelf there? Well, that's not structural, you know, move the shelf over there then, you know, that's. That's not going to be, I mean, what I think we are, the concept that we have to look at is that. Things that can just be eliminated rather than reinvented. Otherwise, we're going to go back to square one.
Boy, the good thing about opening up that that opening to the south, the river is. I don't know if you looked at the plans close enough, but we're adding a lot of concrete to the foundations and because of house converted to public building and and structurally some problems. That steel frame really needs to be there to hold that thing up, period. And so creating a big opening is just a bonus.
Right.
So it it it's actually a good thing.
Okay. So everybody understand, we're all going to, our concerns are going to go to Scott and then we'll move on. Okay. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. And moving on to agenda item number eight, Assembly Bill two, four, four, nine, and the rules for teleconferencing into city council and commission. Meetings, Scott. Oh, no, this is going to be our attorney. Sorry.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I I'll do this briefly. Uh, the staff report. Pretty much lays everything out, but just as background, the Brown Act, which governs our meetings, has always allowed for. Uh, members of the governing body to teleconference into meetings. Before COVID, that required uh the agenda to list the place where the person would be teleconferencing in from. And then the person had to post the agenda where they were and allow the public to be in the space where they were uh while the meeting was going on. During COVID, uh, the state uh came to understand that perhaps all of that wasn't necessary every time somebody was going to be absent from meetings. And so they adopted Assembly Bill twenty four, forty nine last year. And what that does is gives uh a little bit more leeway uh than the pre-COVID uh requirements. Um, in that it allows. For the five of you up to four times a year, uh, each of you to be absent and to teleconference into a meeting uh without having to post the agenda where you are. Um. It does limit that, however, to essentially health related issues. Um it does limit that, however, to essentially health related issues. Uh there are two types, one is considered or statutorily called just cause. Uh and that is childcare or caregiving of a uh family member. Um the second is a contagious illness had by the member of the body. Uh the third is a need related to a physical or mental disability. And the fourth is travel while on the business of the legislative body or another state or local agency. Uh that last part is is somewhat important, um I I know that uh we have two members uh here who are. Uh employed by other agencies and uh if you were on business of your other agency. Uh and traveling, you could actually um use this just cause provision to not have to. Um follow the full Brown Act requirements. Uh it also uh would allow if you were gone for a state of the California JPIA conference on behalf of the city council. Or to another conference on behalf of the city council, you could you could teleconference in. Uh there are some requirements for what you have to go through to trigger a just cause absence. Uh basically, it's letting uh the city clerk know as as soon as you're able and then um. You teleconference in, uh the second is an emergency circumstance, which is essentially a physical. Individual, physical or an individual family medical emergency, in that case you actually. Uh to to trigger an emergency circumstance absence, you actually ask permission of your colleagues. Um so your note to the city clerk is, I I'd like to ask to trigger an emergency circumstance absence. And so on the agenda or if it happens closer to the council meeting, uh we would insert it. Um as the first item after roll call uh would be. Asking the other members to to let you uh participate remotely. Um generally, you would want to do that for one another, but uh the rationale, I I believe. Uh comes from from the state thinking if. Four of you are upset that one seems to be absent more often, um then you could say no if you really wanted to um. There are some rules about participating remotely that are different than what we followed during COVID. Uh the biggest one is that um you have to identify all persons above age eighteen who are in the room with you. Uh and that is for sunshine for the public, so the public knows uh if anyone's there with you, um you know, my my. Father is in the room because I'm taking care of my father, then they know that perhaps. Uh then they know that there is not somebody who perhaps has an item on the agenda uh sitting there, um you know, talking in your ear. Uh you don't have to let them know any minors in the room. Uh the rest of the rules really go to the city clerk, the city manager and myself in terms of running the meeting, uh there are little things like. If you're teleconferencing in, the public has to be allowed to teleconference in as well, which doesn't seem like a big deal. But if the internet goes down, which without uh. Without fiber throughout the city, the internet might go down, and if it does, then actually the entire meeting has to stop until it comes back. Because the public's access for that night uh is through that fiber um uh through Zoom. And so if that goes down, then the public is considered to be shut out of the meeting. Even if there's not one public person there, if Zoom goes down, we have to stop the meeting, so we would say as we're going through the process of learning about this new bill. Uh don't use it lightly because it does put, you know, some some strain on the city clerk and. And you know, there'll be some voting requirements that we'll we'll talk with the mayor about, but um you know, use it if you need to. If you have health issues, absolutely call in and this is a a great way uh. Well, I shouldn't say a great way, it's a nice thing that the city or that the state legislature has done for local officials um. As opposed to some of the other things they've done for local officials later, so that's it, uh any legal questions on it, please let me know. Um uh the city clerk, obviously, I've updated her on it as well, so she can help you with some of the. The logistics of it if it comes up for any of you um as the year goes on, so thank you very much.
I think you also said too, and this is something that I need to like pay attention to because when I go on Zoom and it's like I'm gonna eat, I'll turn off my camera. But I don't want everyone watching me chew, you have to keep your camera on the entire time, so it's not like, oh, I'm gonna chew real quick and then. You know, like.
You had to be on one or the other, either your mic's on or I guess.
Has to be on, the mic should be on. Practically speaking, we're all gonna understand if you have to stop it for a second, especially if you're with a child or with a parent, somebody who. You're taking care of their physical needs. Okay, if you have to mute it for a moment, fine, but it's supposed to be on because again, it's it's sunshine for the public so that they can hear what's going on in the room. And know that your attention is on the meeting and not too much on whatever else you're taking care of that night.
You mean football game?
That's right.
Did you see, did you say SB three thirty? For that imposition from the state, did you?
I I I did not mention any individual bill, sir.
Okay, so uh we all only have to uh have the city receive and file.
Yes, sir.
Having not been said, city managers report.
Thank you, Mayor King, members of the city council, um just a couple items for you this evening as usual. I want to mention that uh as the city council uh made a proclamation earlier this evening regarding human trafficking month. Uh our police chief, Lieutenant Valencia, has offered to come to the city council and give a very brief. Uh less than ten minute presentation on local efforts regarding human trafficking and so. Uh in that regard, uh I will plan to bring him to the next meeting, the January twenty sixth meeting. Uh that way he can make this presentation while it is still human trafficking awareness month. Um secondly, the it it has been a little bit delayed, but last month, um our Bulton engage. Uh public engagement tool went live uh with uh with two um. Projects, we're calling them uh that are listed there, more to come soon, one of which is the um. Willamston property and the activities going on there, the other is the BUE seventeen or the hub project web or uh hub project. Uh site, um those uh two projects are listed on the Bulton Engage um. Website and uh there um members of the public can view those projects, can look at plans, can read uh updates that happen. And can sign up for email updates so that in the event that they're interested but don't want to be monitoring city websites all the time. We will automatically send them notifications when updates happen on those projects. Uh we will be adding new projects to that in the very near future, I expect that the In-N-Out project will find its way on there in the next week or two. And other projects um uh that that are coming forward eventually, we hope to have all of our planning projects as well as um. Public Works projects and other other initiatives that happen in other city departments listed there so that everyone can kind of see what's going on and follow along. That can be found by visiting our city's webpage, cityofbulton.com. And on the homepage, there are a list of of little blocks or buttons down at the bottom. The lower, what is lower right hand button says Bulton Engage and it's got a city logo on it and you click on that, it will take you right to the site. You will have to sign up, give your name and email address uh uh to allow your uh to allow your own access to that, but once you do that, you can access. Uh we can uh run surveys through that, we can push information out, bring information in as. Uh the the city finds necessary and desirable, so uh yes.
This is awesome, recommend you and whatever staff got involved, I was sorry, I was listening and also looking it up on my phone. I just wanted to ask, uh so if somebody signs up for notifications for a project, that's not in lieu of paper notice.
No, this is not, this does not replace our our legal public notice requirements, this is in addition to that.
Okay.
You do not.
Liability for miss.
No, we're not, but this is this is our effort at community engagement and so um you know, it's one of those situations where. Um we're offering this to the public, the last thing we want to do is not notify them of something where you said we're going to do that, so we will we will. Um en- ensure that this is updated frequently.
Would you said there was surveys on there, would you, would there be a survey on a project?
That there are not surveys on there right now, but in the event that, and I wouldn't necessarily suggest that for a planning project per se. But for, let's say we were discussing something to do with uh public improvements on Avenue of Flags. We might put out a survey, let the let the uh residents weigh in on what they'd like to see on Avenue of Flags with regard to public improvements. Not necessarily, gee, do you want to see X, Y, or Z a pro- project approved by the city council?
Um but like we were, um at one time we were talking about having a little exercise park somewhere, if we put something like that, we could say. Would you be interested in it? You know, something to kind of get, uh everybody said that's stupid, we won't do it, then it wouldn't happen, but you know, but.
Exactly, we can use this to gauge public.
Put on something that gives you a good reason not to do something or. Okay.
Absolutely.
Are there any plans to use this in any type of way, sort of like an emergency response thing, like you know how sometimes we have like. Oh, sorry, like the um. The issues that we had at the liquor store down there, like something saying, hey, there's a shelter in place, hey, there's this like. Sort of like the ready SP, I don't know, do we use that as a city or like would this?
That's a countywide uh website, um we certainly could do that for things like um. Uh let's say for uh the rainstorms we just had, if we signed, uh if we had people sign up for emergency notifications.
Exactly.
We could do that, I I really don't know how helpful it would be for something like the liquor store holdup where we're talking about. Short timeframes, yeah.
Or a street closure, like, hey, remember that, you know, the fall fest is gonna be here this day to this day, there's no street.
That's exactly the kind of thing we're talking about, yes, and and we just, we. We as a staff have been trying to get our hands around how this works. And we've had some staffing issues over the past several months, but we're getting over that now and we will build that uh functionality into the system as we move forward.
I noticed there's no comments section under these, some of these projects.
Um there there are a number of reasons for that.
Get into Facebook.
Yeah, the primary reason we we we're really gonna limit comments and such is that we have an obligation to. Maintain records of all of those comments and it gets to be really problematic if there's no, if if it's just a wide open forum and.
Want to be on the record, that's that's not a good idea. I have a question for you, Scott, before we go, who owns this wifi, is that the the library?
The wifi that's in this room?
They sit out here and they go off the wifi.
Uh well, yeah, that's that's a service that's provided by our library staff, the the city of Galita provides that.
Imagine this would come up on our different, I'll I'll talk to you about that later.
All right. Um last, oh, I'm sorry, la- last item, um. After last year's efforts with uh council priorities and trying to line them up with the budget, I found that 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 timing wound up not being as advantageous as I expected. So I'm gonna try and go back to our typical February uh scheme sometime in the month of February. Um either the first or the second meeting, I'd like to schedule an item where we discuss. Uh any items that the city council would like to see taken on as priority items, these are things that are not as grand in scope. Or scale as what you find as your council goals that we adopt as part of the budget, these are more um. More more granular items that you think uh. Specific projects or issues that you might like uh the city to tackle over the course of the next fiscal year, these should be annual type projects. So as opposed to longer term projects, um so if you have any thoughts along that line and I can send out an email and kind of give everybody some examples of. What things have been suggested in the past. I- if you will respond to me by say the 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 end of the first or second week in February, we can make sure at least by the end of February, we have an item. We can bring this forward and discuss it, we'll then uh allow you to discuss all the items, prioritize them as you see fit. And narrow them down, I we probably shouldn't take on any more than about six or seven for the course of the year. Um but I'd like to have that discussion so that we know where you'd like us to be headed over the next year, so. And with that, I will conclude the city manager's report and answer any other questions you might have.
I have just one, a couple of months ago, we had a written comment requesting some alterations. Or updates to the park for specifically, if I remember correctly. Shade potentially and then a an infant swing with it, so there were two things. I was just wondering if there was a progress update on that, if we had looked at that, how.
We we have done solid, Rose, do you, okay, go ahead.
Um I I have met with the playground manufacturer rep for the playground equipment that we do have at Village Park. We've looked at that and he's recently emailed me some design options and costs, I haven't had a chance to review that, to send that out to council, but. I probably have that available next week by time, um Scott, the city, uh not the city, the. Friday updates and stuff to review.
Thank you.
Let let's just go directly to Scott with that.
Please, please, just.
No, we haven't, we had another issue.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Over to the tree.
Counselor? All right.
Say anything. Okay, adjourning. Turning this meeting until our next regular meeting on thirty January twenty six, twenty twenty three.
First in person.